I would like to call the meeting to order if you please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any additions or deletions to this evening's agenda?
Yes, there's one addition to the agenda tonight that will be Action Item C, set public hearing for Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. Are there any corrections to the minutes of the regular meeting from December 21st, 2015? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those minutes stand approved. We move on to reports. I don't have a report for us this evening. I just wanted to say thank you for coming tonight and Happy New Year. Madam Clerk, do you have a report for us this evening?
I don't have any reports tonight, but I just want to say Happy New Year and Happy Birthday to Frank and Barb.
Happy Birthday.
(laughing).
No cake tonight, sorry. I ate all of it.
Also?
I'm sorry, also.
Madam Treasurer, do you have a report for us this evening?
Motion to pay the bills, please.
We have a motion to pay the bills? Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or discussion on paying the bills? I just would like to point out, there was a little bit of confusion last week, but now we have color-coded board run and off-run, and there should be no mistakes, so we're all set on those. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, roll call, please, on paying the bills.
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Benelli?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Courtz, yes. Mr. Castle?
Yes.
Mrs. Verh?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Do we have any trustee reports this evening?
Yes.
Trustee Verh? Trustee Castle?
Yes, I just want to comment. I was reading the January issue of the Township Focus, which is the magazine published by the Michigan Township Association, and Flint Township is mentioned in there. And just for the information of the Board, if they don't know, and the residents, our township was recognized by the University of Michigan East Cities Program, which honors local efforts to foster growth and economic development. The 2015 Award for Four Star Honored Communities includes Flint Township. They're included. The others that won this award were Alpine Township, Comstock Charter Township, Carfield Charter Township, Meridian Charter Township, Saginaw Charter Township, and Thomas Township, and Flint Township is included, and we actually got the certificate. Honored community. And I think that Tracy Tucker should be commended as participating in, as doing the kind of job that got us this award, because I know that it was largely due to her efforts, not her efforts alone, but her efforts and others, that got us the award, which is given to townships that are, I guess you can say, honored for promoting business, new business in the township, and we do do that, so I think we do some congratulations. Thank you, madam.
So Tracy, putting you on the spot, this is the fourth year that we've participated with that, isn't it? Or more?
First year we did was 2012. It's been a four-star city every year except for one, when we had some losses and still a three-star. We were still honored for what we did, but because we didn't hit a certain level for businesses, we fell short that one year. But yeah, we've gotten an award ever since 2012.
That's good, and I know you go there. Thank you very much. So trustee Verh, you had a report?
Two things. The Senior Center, again, the dance night is coming up, January 15th. Tickets are $5, and there's a limit on those. It's 100, I think. I'm pretty sure it's 100, but everybody's got to come and buy their tickets and bring their dancing shoes. Also, the Senior Winter Games are starting, and registration is now through January 7th. If you need any more information, you can call the Senior Center on Graham Road.
You have a date on it?
The games are February 1st through the 25th.
All righty, and they can just call the Senior Center for more information, or the Senior Center has that newsletter online, don't they? I know they give it away hard copy there. We have copies here, and you can go to Carmen Ainsworth's website, and that's where they find the link to the Senior Center, right?
Correct.
We have a link on our website that'll take you to the Senior Center, has that information, right?
We may want to think about updating that, too.
Okay, sounds good. Any other trustee reports? No? We move on to general reports. Chief Sipert, do you have a report for us this evening?
No report this evening, just the item on the agenda.
Thank you. Assistant Chief Berkley?
I have nothing on the agenda, and I do not have a report tonight since it's the start of the new year. I'd like to also wish everybody a Happy New Year and successful 2016.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Tucker, do you have a report for us this evening?
I just wanted to mention to everybody that I put in your boxes today a revenue breakdown for the Building Department for December. Just to give you an idea, we've processed 616 business licenses and 102 permits just in the month of December, so we were very busy, even though we had shortened weeks. So over the year itself, we did 2,748 different permits and certificates and that type of thing. So we do a lot back there. People don't realize how much gets done, but I just wanted to give you that, to give you an idea, and plus, it shows you what revenue we took in. Now that we've got this report that we can give you, I can give you these every month, so you can see what we're doing.
And how soon will we have all the business licenses out? Probably February?
Everything's been mailed out. We're just waiting as they come back in, and we'll start at the end of this month. What we don't have, then we'll be able to move forward. But they're processing pretty quickly. Like I said, they did 600. That's about half. And then we're starting on those ones we found. We're going to get the letters out to them, and if we don't get responses, we'll just do with them what we're doing with the other ones and do the NOVs and go that route. I'm not going to spend a lot of time, like we've done in the past. We usually, when we first started doing this, we would go and we would talk to them later and take hand, deliver them a paper, but it seems that it's the same people every year that we're having these issues with, so we're just going to just go right to the NOVs and hopefully that'll take care of the problem. Especially now that we're sending them the sheet where all they got to do is just check it off, that everything's right, or they can just make the change on it, so.
And those forms are available online, right?
Mm-hmm. Yep, everything's available there.
All righty. Y'all set?
Yep.
Thank you very much. So at this point, we'll move on to public comment. If you'd like to address the Board, I'd ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll be given three minutes to address the Board.
Harold Polly, 1051 Cabot Drive. I was only going to come here this evening to wish you all a Happy New Year, and especially for the residents and the businesses that reside in Flint Township. I was gratified to see we got some recognition, because one of the things I was planning on doing was trying to put forward some proposals to bring back Flint Township's reputation that it deserves, because I don't think it's recognized as for what it is, and it doesn't live up to the potential that it has. But I'm not sure, not sure I'm ready for that, and I'm not sure the township is ready for that. One thing I did decide over the holidays was changing the name of Flint Township doesn't accomplish anything other than confuse a lot of addresses, and because just changing the name doesn't change what we're made of. Just the other comment that I'd like to make is, we've had several retirements recently. The way I don't see is any really ingenious ways that the township and this Board is looking at filling those retiree positions that would go along to trying to control our number of employees and dependents that we're furnishing benefits for. And if you, it's not unusual for us to probably have 8% to 10% retirements in a year, but you not only have them, but then you have the people that replace them and their dependents added to the number that we're controlling. And the residents of Flint Township are on the hook for whatever the costs come from, and so do the businesses. They're the ones that's going to have to pay for it. I think we really need to look at how we fill these positions, or are we just locked in by contract, that we have no options? Because we need to get better control. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Polly. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the Board?
My name is Gerald Roberts, 4487 Lindywood Drive, Schwartz Creek, Michigan. Karen, I'd like your undivided attention, rather than you writing on something else there, if you would, because I have something to say, and I'd like to have you hear it. Thank you very much. Don't need any rolling eyes or anything like that, okay? Thank you. We're going into an election year right now, and just like as we go to school and we send our kids to school, I have a report card. And each and every one of you people up there will probably get a grade, and the grade will be given during the time of the primary or election time, as to what type of a job that the residents of this particular township have felt that you've done. I have a certain thing, in other words, that in my mind, that I think that a lot of the people here that are on that Board have lost sight of where they came from. Where they came from is with regard to the community and representing the citizens, not special interest groups, not Mr. Williamson down the road here, not Health Plus, not a lot of these other particular organizations that are here, and even money, in other words, is paid to the Township, Michigan Township Association, for a little plaque that they give us. What we need to think about is what can you do for the people? And don't lose sight of the point that you're up there representing the individuals and the individual PACs players that put you people into office. There's certain things that disturbed me this last year with regard to passing a 3.85 mil public safety. Our police department seemed like they got full reign, they got a lot of people there, but right directly after that particular vote, there should have been something done with regard to getting Fire Station Number One over here online and getting people trained so that they could take over that particular fire station. That didn't happen until later on down the road. There should be people over there manning that right now. Okay, but the first thing, rather than that being a priority, was to give everybody raises. That's wrong. It didn't look good in the people's public sight, or it didn't look good in anybody's sight here. And when you people put yourselves and constituents, in other words, yourself over the constituents of this particular township and the people that are digging in their pocket and having to wonder if they're going to be able to pay their taxes by December 31st or March 31st, or their summer taxes, you guys got to think about that. I know Karen and me have had constentions with regard to how the meetings have been run this last year. I've seen preferential treatment, where somebody was up here five and a half minutes, question and answer, back and forth, and then I get ambushed a couple weeks ago. In other words, Roberts Rules of Order were not followed.
Your time's up, Mr. Roberts. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Karen.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the Board?
I appreciate the opportunity, in other words, of getting up here and speaking. My three minutes. It'd be nice if maybe we cut you guys off at three minutes, too, okay?
Dave Huffman, 2483 Warner Road. Want to wish all a Happy New Year. I wish nothing as usual for this township, but the very best. But as a taxpayer out here and a constituent of this township, I've had some concerns over this last year, too, and unfortunately, I don't see anything that's really being done to address it. And getting back to the Fire Station Number One here, we had a perfect example of what's going on this last weekend. We had a call where we had a truck from the Flushing Station respond to us on Flushing Road. The one on Bristol Road came over. They came out, two trucks, two using a personnel, alls it was was a false alarm. And that right there, if we would have had this manned out here, we could have had a guy walk across the street over here to where this false alarm came, and that probably would have saved us about $1,000 in trucks and personnel and gas. Now, I don't know if you call that stupid, or arrogance, or lack of leadership, or what's going through your mind, but as a constituent out here and as a taxpayer, I think it's wrong. I've been telling you about it the last year. Nothing seems to be happening, and I'm not happy about it. Another thing that I really wasn't happy to see, one of our old newsboys, who's been one of the biggest charity organizations out here in Flint Township for years and years and years, and has done nothing but tremendous things for this county, raising money for children who do not have any sources for a good Christmas, with this crazy ordinance that you came up with on this public ordinance, by being so arrogant, not giving the old newsboys a one-day permit to come out here and do their thing in the streets, you proceeded to cost them $13,000 in revenue, and I've talked to a lot of people with the old newsboys organization, and that's a fact. That's what you cost them out here, and it was not a good thing. All the townships in the city had it open for the old newsboys. This township did not, and it was a bad thing that happened. And with that, Happy New Year, but maybe we can get some leadership to start going out here and start addressing this thing instead of taking everything like a big joke. This is serious business. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the Board? So then we'll close public comment. We'll move on to action items. Action Item A. Chief Sipert?
I submitted a letter to the Township Board asking that we hire an individual to fill one of our 10 open budgeted positions. This would bring us up to 36 sworn officers. Ethan Thompson is probably the last applicant that we will hire off the existing list, and we're in the process of creating a new list, the Civil Service Commission is. Ethan Thompson is a graduate of St. John's High School, and he attended Lansing Community College as well as Alpena Community College. He did obtain his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Ferris State University, and he just graduated last month from the Mid-Michigan Police Academy. He has successfully passed his physical examination, his drug screening, and his psychological examination. And with your approval, I would like Mr. Thompson to begin work next Monday, January 11th. So I respectfully request the Township Board to hire this individual, and if you have any questions, that I might be able to answer.
So based on Chief Sipert's recommendation, a motion would be in order to move forward?
Oh, move.
Is there a second to the motion?
Support.
Any questions for Chief Sipert? Any discussion?
Is Mr. Thompson here?
No, he's not.
Okay. And I think I have Georgia Menounas' proxy to vote yes on anybody who graduates from Ferris State University. But maybe we don't need it tonight.
So any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, roll call, please, on approving the hiring of one Ethan Thompson for the open position on the Police Department.
Ms. Benelli?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Courtz, yes. Mr. Castle?
Yes.
Mrs. Verh?
Yes.
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Sipert. Action Item B is to consider hiring a clerical utility-to-budgeted position. We posted for this last November, but we didn't hire. We waited on that, and the request is coming before the Board again in January. There was a few reasons why we didn't move forward on that, but there is a need, and we're requesting that this Board's hire Paul Nebraska for the utility-to-budgeted position. A motion would be in order to move forward?
Support.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Actually, don't know where to start. So add a utility to, which was Craig Parker.
Yeah.
He left.
He retired, yes, he did.
And that position was filled?
We hired Sandy, who was part-time at the police station. She was actually filling two part-time jobs over there. We tried to save some money by having her do some work over here, and she was working here about an hour a day, which was stretching longer and longer. And Chief Sipert can help me out here. That didn't leave enough time for her to fulfill all the jobs and the duties that she had over at the Police Department. Is that correct?
Or get done what we needed.
Because she was flex hours. She was supposed to be kind of like 30 hours over there and five hours here.
I don't even know who was five hours, but it started stretching.
Well, that's what I have on paperwork.
Right, well, I think it was more sometimes here.
And that she was hired to fill Craig Parker's position? So we're creating another position?
Well, Barb, there was two part-time positions over at the Police Department. She was working her part-time job, and she was also filling, Chief Sipert, was it Terry's job or Reed's job? So she had full-time work over at the Police Department. That left us with filling a full-time position over here, Craig Parker's position, with someone who was doing five hours of work, give or take, and it wasn't enough. And we had nobody doing work over at the fire station, and the Senior Center calls us once in a while, and he does work over there. The fire station never had anybody running errands or fixing things until we had a part-time position here, which that meant it took time away from working at the Township offices, and the Senior Center and the library call once in a while for work to be done also. There's work to do.
Well, because the position you want to hire tonight, there is no actual job description. It doesn't have a pay rate. It doesn't, and I'm trying to justify it, because I thought also there was a condition from the union, the secretary at the Fire Department, and this position would not be filled again.
No, that's the position in the Building Department. We filled a position in the Building Department and kept the position at the fire station part-time.
So what at the Fire Department would somebody be doing that the firemen don't do? Am I right?
Fixing faucets. Mike, what has, what's been done over there?
Aren't they supposed to maintain the buildings?
Yeah, they do. The duty men at Station 2 and 3 maintain the station. They do basically everything that needs to be done unless it's needing professional assist, you know.
And then we have the trades that do that from the Building Department.
Yeah, we call in electrician, a plumber, if it gets real bad, but minor stuff, the firefighters all repair. We have nobody at Station 1, and a lot of stuff has went to disrepair. Even the cleaning is becoming an issue, you know, so we tried to work on that.
And picking up supplies.
So, but where, so do you see what I'm saying, though? If Craig Parker worked here?
Right. Craig Parker didn't do work over at the fire station, and he barely went over to the Senior Center or the library.
And we have somebody at the Senior Center who does that work unless we send someone from the Building Department.
So then I can be guaranteed we'll never get another phone call from the Senior Center or the library for us to do work over there, which is not true, because it happens.
We do, though, Barb. We get calls, come fix the faucets and everything from the Senior Center.
Tracy, who are you usually supposed to do that? But is the agreement that a call from the Senior Center, either a call or fax, comes to your department? Am I correct?
Yeah, if they send something here, then I send either, well, now it's Paul, or I send somebody that we hire out.
And it's for different jobs, for, I mean...
And they call for all kinds of stuff.
So what's wrong with keeping this position as a part-time position, then? I mean, I don't see where it justifies another person. And if that's the case, that the position at the Police Department and was here, where she was supposed to come here, doesn't that description get changed? She's no longer going to be coming here, because that was in the agreement when she was hired. Am I correct?
I think the job description you're making reference to is pretty generic, where it doesn't specify which department. It just specifies the type of work.
Our duties as assigned.
I don't recall it being specific to a department.
I'll be one person that'll say, Barb, we tried it. I spent a lot of time running to Sam's, up and down the aisles, picking up supplies myself.
Then have a schedule of a part-time person.
It doesn't matter. There's not enough time. There's just not enough time.
It is a useless position. I'm sorry. It is, and I was told that this position would never be filled again.
I don't think that was ever said.
And you know, when you sit there and say that somebody's going to be five hours here and 30 hours at the Police Department...
We tried it that way, and it didn't work. Is there any further discussion? Do you have any other questions?
Apparently not.
Well, you've made it clear that you think it's...
Well, it's just that, seriously, it is a waste of money.
And that's your opinion, and you're entitled to that.
To creating another position, if you look at all this stuff, it is very clear. And I said when they hired Sandy, she couldn't do that job. Am I right?
And so you did.
So you just, well, just keep hiring anybody and everybody. Go ahead.
Well, Barb, when I came here, we were at 100 employees. We're down to 69 or 70, so we're down a lot of employees.
We should be consolidating some things, and we haven't even done that.
Well, that doesn't fit into this conversation here.
You know, somebody needs to go to Sam's for something. There's nothing wrong with hiring somebody two or three days a week.
Other than that, Barb, and if you were here...
Okay.
Any other questions? Discussion on this?
No, none.
Yes, I have a comment. And my concern is with hiring. Apparently, employers are brought on, and it's part-time, does not come before this Board. When a full-time position becomes available, it doesn't get passed in-house posting. So no one outside is, they're not given the opportunity to apply for these positions. Here is another position, because this gentleman, nothing against Mr. Nebraska, he's already working here, did not come before this Board for any type of approval. Now it's posted in-house, so he gets the first opportunity to apply for this job.
And I posted it for the union, and nobody wanted it.
Well, but it's in-house posting. What I'm saying is, it doesn't go beyond the township building.
And so our policy and procedure manual calls for all full-time employees that are hired to come before this Board. It does not address part-time employees. And our obligation is to, the contract language of Ask Me Contract, we give the union five days to respond to the posting, and beyond that, it doesn't address what we have to do. It says we may do this, we can post on the website, we can post in the newspaper. It says we may. It doesn't say you have to. You know, I think it's a smart thing to have someone work here part-time to see what type of work ethic they have, and see what kind of work that they do for us. I don't disagree with doing it that way.
What I'm saying...
Apparently, they don't have that problem over at the Senior Center either, because that's how the senior director was hired. She worked part-time, and then she was, without interviewing, she was made senior director. She's doing a great job. I don't have a problem with it. I think that's the normal way to do things.
Well, first of all, the Senior Center, they're on totally different guidelines. They have their own Board. They make their decisions.
I understand that.
And that's not what's on the table for discussion. I'm referring to the in-house postings, because temporary employers are always given the first opportunity, and it does not give anyone outside, the public, the opportunity to apply for these positions. positions, because they've already been designed for someone that has been brought on under a temporary basis.
But that's not always true, because we have taken applications, and we have tested, and those who have done well on the test have gotten the job. We didn't test for this position. Mr. Nebraska has some skilled trade, skilled, some skilled trades. Anyhow, he does a good job at what he does, and there is a need to have him full-time. That's why this was brought to this board. And we can go on and on about this. It's clear how you feel about that. If there's anything anybody else wants to say, now's the time to talk and discuss this, or else we can go on and have a vote on the motion.
I have another comment. We still don't use Michigan Works. How come we don't put postings down there?
We're not obligated to.
It's a good idea. You know, I mean, I'm just putting it out there.
And the senior center does, Barb, we can do that, too.
That's really low.
Barb, is there a fee with that, though?
That's unbelievable.
No, with Michigan Works, is there a fee?
I have no idea.
There is not a fee. I did one time post on it and didn't receive any applicants from them. But it is a free service.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, roll call, please, on hiring Paul Nebraska to fill the utility two position in the clerical.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Courts, yes. Mr. Castle?
Yes.
Mrs. Furt?
No.
Mrs. Parker?
No.
Ms. Benelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Action item C is to set a public hearing for the hearing of, or the discussion of the Parks and Recs master plan. And that will be for our February 16th meeting. Is there any objection to that? That's the plan to do so? That public hearing will be...
Did you say February 16th?
Yes. Y'all set?
Yes.
Is that a Monday? That's a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
President's Day. I want to clarify that.
So our board meeting that...
It's a Tuesday.
Will be Tuesday, February 16th. Are we all set? So without objection and with no further business?
One more thing. Don't mind.
Go ahead.
One thing with the Park and Rec, apparently there's some issues with our gardens. We have the county mowed one down. We have, what, consumers working on the trail, driving trucks on the trail, and we have a telephone pole on another one. And then obviously, we were told about the tree that was cut down on Graham and Corona. And maybe if we did an article about the tree that was cut down, somebody will notice they had a really nice Christmas tree. It's just a suggestion. But I would hope that people would just, including consumers and everybody else, would just pay a little bit more attention. It's a lot of hard work, and it's really disheartening to see that happen.
Well, at our committee meeting, we talked to Doug Piggott of Row Engineering about bringing an ordinance to the township board about notifying the township, if you are with the utility and you're going to be using the right-of-way and the easements. And I'd like to bring that ordinance to the board. And you put it nicely when you say a tree was cut down by Graham and Corona. Somebody decided that a tree that was planted by the Parks and Recs Committee to beautify the township would make a nice Christmas tree, and they chopped it down. So I don't know if that'll make the newspaper, but maybe someone has information on that and might let us know where our pine tree is, because now we've got to plant another one. And, you know, we have a Parks and Recs Committee that pours their heart and soul into beautifying the township, and takes a lot of time and a lot of effort and even a lot of money. And I just, it's unbelievable that someone would choose to cut that tree down for their Christmas tree. Is there any other business? Hearing none. We'll be adjourned.
Thank you.